Let's see if Counselor Williams is on.
Sheriff.
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 Sheriff. Perfect. All right.
Focus on Zoom, okay?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, let's go and get started. So I'm gonna go ahead and call our city council. We need to order for this Monday, July 22nd, 2024. Let's go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, let me do roll call real quick. Counselor Williams.
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Myers.
Here.
Counselor Rich.
Here.
Counselor Cuthbertson.
Here.
Counselor Lindner.
Here.
And I know Counselor Winter, he is running a little late, but he will be here. So thank you. All right. Who would like to on the city council read section 2.1 this evening?
I can go for it.
You want to do it again?
Sure, unless somebody else would like to. Okay, cool. Thanks. The public comment period is designed to gain input from the public. Public comment is not intended to be a dialogue between the council staff and any person making a comment. Any person who raises a question during public comment should rest assured that the city staff is making a note of your question, and the council and staff will work together to identify the appropriate city official to follow up with you directly.
Thank you. Do you have any public comments this evening? Come on up. Go ahead and.
Is the microphone on or you want to use the one down there?
You want to have the table instead?
Yeah.
Turn it on and go ahead and give us your name and any other information we need from.
Oh, go ahead and press the button.
It's the little red light on. Yeah.
There you go.
There you go. Perfect. You're on.
I have succeeded in technology. My name is Ari Frankfurter and I reside at 25147 Coon Road. And I understand that there's going to be an executive item on the agenda regarding the library. And of course, I'm here for the library. I want to say that I understand and respect the need for discussions on the library and other issues to be not public, but I wanted to still bring my input. And I want to say that I was very pleased with the work session meeting the other day. I wanted to applaud the city council for participating in asking really relevant and wonderful questions regarding, and I wanted to encourage the continuation of the city council in the process of resolving the IGA. I wanted to mention that sometimes it can feel like there's an adversarial relationship between the community and the city council because there are certain interests and passion. But that is not the interest that I have and the people that I speak to in the community. We do care very much about the library and we are confident and hopeful to a quick resolution. We do understand also the concerns that the library in Monroe has with regard to what you might call equity of payment for maintenance of the building. But we also understand that the library has a very specific, how shall I say, direction about where, how that building should be used. It's, and while I understand that there might be a discussion regarding what the city attorney has to say about the easement and that I may not, may or may not be privy to, I'd like to know, but be that as it may. We are hopeful that we can come to a quick resolution and that in the future, that perhaps there can be a little bit more transparency, transparency in the process so that people won't get their undies in a bunch and make unnecessary jump to unnecessary conclusions or drama. And again, I wanted to applaud the city council for attending to this in the work sessions and continuing in that process and encourage your continuation in that process. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a public comment they'd like to make? Come on up. Go ahead and identify yourself for us.
My name is Evelyn Lee, 25776 Alpine Road, Monroe, Oregon. So I'm, I'm here to talk about the library also. And I just wanted to say that it's from, from all of the participation that I've been enjoying through this process, I think it's clear to everybody how much support and love the library has from every, from the community within and without the city limits. And I think that it was really astounding to hear from many different voices saying, oh, my God, you've got a financial problem. Cleaning the library. Let's just have a fundraiser. We could raise that instantaneously. So there's a lot of willingness from everybody who wants to help. And I was saddened to see the word choice when you did a, a press release after one of the meetings when you said you felt saddled by the library. And I feel as though, you know, that's a very, that's a sad way to feel about the library. Maybe you feel that perhaps prior city officials saddled you with IGA's that you don't particularly like. And maybe that's what you meant when you said saddled, but at any rate, you don't have to feel like the city is alone in this. If you ever have problems with the library, all you have to do is identify the problem to the whole community at large. And there will be solutions forthcoming from willing, willing people. So you know, in the 11 years that, that the library has been in existence, there hasn't been a mechanism for county people outside the city limits to donate to the city toward the library, to look toward the library's regular everyday maintenance. And so people from outside the city limits did start a tax exempt fundraiser. $250,000 have been raised and all but one of the donor, all but one of the donor donors is from outside the city limits. That's, you know, that's another example of the amount of willingness for people who love the library. So I guess my, my bottom line is we've got a problem, whether it's, you know, we, we're having, we're struggling with janitorial fees or we need, we're in a world of hurt regarding our city hall. Is there any chance that we can use some space in the library? If you identify the problem, I think quick resolution is going to happen because you've got a tremendous community, both within the city limits and without the city limits, who want to help and are ready and willing to help. So that's my message. And thank you all. I agree with Ari. I agree. It's good to see you engaging and asking really great questions. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on. We'll go ahead and we've got the sheriff on Zoom right now. And we're ready for your report, sir.
I believe everybody has a copy in front of them there. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, cool, cool. We had our meeting on the 13th down in Monroe. I was able to get the commanders down there. It was, I won't say it was well attended, but it was, there was a lot of folks there. I was pretty happy. I would have liked to have seen a lot more. But you'll notice this report is dated to July 17th. Our meeting was the 13th. And one of the issues that came up was the issue of citations versus educational stops. I have shared that message. And of course, the message was shared with Captain Duffett, who was at the meeting as well. And I know that he has shared that message as well throughout the ranks. So it'll be curious to see what that looks like as we move forward. I know that my staff is not big on hammering people if they don't have to. I think that we, my message has always been, I prefer an educational stop if and when it's appropriate. But I can also tell you, on my way down to Monroe, I stopped a car who passed me and three others. And it was, it was an eye opener for the jail captain who was riding with me. So we all recognize that the speed's an issue down there. Similarly, we discussed the fact that we had a radar trailer down there. That information was being downloaded today and then shared with the patrol lieutenant, but he was not in the office today. So once he has that information compiled, I'll shoot it to Steve so that you all can have it. Take a look at it and then have an idea of what we, what we're seeing down there as well. Does that, is that acceptable for you? I just want to make sure we're good.
Sounds great.
Okay, sounds good.
That sounds awesome.
Many questions regarding the report, the activity log.
Uh, I, just curiosity. So June 19th theft three, what is theft three? Is that like a pretty significant theft or is that minor, like petty theft?
That's, that's a pretty minor theft.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to know what, like, what kinds of valuables are we talking about here in Monroe being? Hopefully not big things like cars or?
No, that theft three is, is, is as low as you can get with theft.
Jolly Rancher from Dairy Mart, something like that.
Really, really, that's what it could be.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions for the sheriff?
Um, well now we have our citizens academy starting up as well. And if you have any folks that you can think of that make good candidates, please, please let me know. Please share. And we have information online as well on our, on our website to get involved in that as well.
I just wanted to say thank you, Sheriff, for hosting that, that the meet and greet, the town hall that we had. It was very informative and I found it very, very informative and very useful. So thank you and your team for supporting us.
Well, I just, I like to get the subject matter experts out down, out of the building once in a while. And I know they appreciate it. So I know they had a good time down there as well. And it gives them an opportunity to brag about their divisions and what they do to participate both in the office and in Benton County as a whole. So it's fun for me. I enjoy getting those guys out and getting them the opportunity to do that. So thank you.
Well, it was greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Counselor, did you?
Oh, I was gonna say, thanks for the bringing down the radar trailer. I think that that was, was helpful with giving people more awareness that they need to slow down when they see that flashing.
Right? It really gets your attention. You know, it's funny. We put that on Crocker in North Albany. And literally like within two days, the city of Albany put their radar trailer out on Crocker as well. It was pretty funny because clearly somebody had said, hey, the county has it in the city up here. And so somebody said something because they put there's a, I like it. It really does get your attention.
Yeah, definitely.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, I'm gonna cut the sheriff loose.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Appreciate what you do. Thank you. If you need anything, you always know where to find me.
Thank you, sir. Have a good evening.
You too.
Okay, next up is the city administrator's report.
Well, good evening. So we have I think the biggest things, I've got a whole bunch of things now moving with Civil West, with our tank mixer. Things are gonna start happening over the next, I mean, starting immediately and moving forward. One thing that also, I'm talking about grants now. The 1135 project returned its agreement, participation agreement with us today. I've reviewed it. I will send it as I promised to our attorney to make sure that we're covered. It appears just on a cursory read that the biggest issues that I had was what happens if we have overreach and all that. Well, from how I read it, and this, I'll verify this with the attorney and with Elliot Porter later this week. He's the project manager for the 1135. Is that there is a set dollar cost for this that they've allocated of that we have a percentage cost share. It's for about $785,500. But that amount is contingent, that's a cost, that's a percentage of the dollar amount that they've allocated. There are provisions that if it goes above what the federal portion is, that they will then give us notice and they'll stop the project. So
Okay.
From how I understand it, how I understand it, we would not be liable for more than $785,500. If it goes over because of cost overruns, et cetera, then the core would just simply stop the project. Now, there is a question as to once contracts get let. Okay, and that's the, my question, because once contracts get left, that's a contractual issue.
Right.
So at what point does the bleeding stop? And how much would we be responsible for? Those are the questions for the attorney to look at.
And the 700, sorry, the 785,000 that we're on the hook for is coming to us through the grants, right? It's not coming out of our budget. It's, it's what the long-term watershed council has been raising for us.
The long-term watershed council has committed to coming up with that money in addition to money for the water intake.
Got it.
And also, I think they're also participating in the habitat restoration as well. That was my original understanding. So at this point, two things will happen. One, we need to have this vetted by the attorney so that you are aware of what you may or may not be on the hook for in case things don't go exactly the way it's supposed to. The second one is we need to have another agreement set up with the long-term watershed council to make sure that all those monies, you know,
Still available.
Are still available and we're not in the hook for those.
Yep.
So those are the kind of the two things that are going in place. And September 30th is, is the deadline for all this to be resolved.
And the, well, and also isn't there, I mean, with a project like this, the, I mean, they can say that they'll stop the project, but I mean, there's some stuff that you, like, there's gotta be a point of no return on.
Yes, oftentimes in contracts that there, once the construction company has deployed their equipment, has come out here, you know, committed to hiring people, committed to hiring materials and all that.
Right.
You're, you're on the hook.
Yeah, especially if like the, if the, if the dam structure is taken down and, you know, you can't stop and not shore up the footings on the bridge or and have that wash away just because, yeah.
Or water intake.
Yeah, exactly. So once we go through that process, they will be spending a year going through and designing. They have other things they need to do in order to find out exactly how much silt and stuff is behind the dam. What the impact will, that will be when the dam is removed. They will be doing additional work up by the bridge piers so that they can come up with the correct engineering for that that meets ODAS because as we said, ODOT will only verbally tell us at this point that they will be responsible for maintenance in perpetuity, but only if it meets their design criteria. So that's another little, you know, there's, there's lots of, there's lots of little, we will do this, but lots of little strings.
And I'm just curious too, because like, how do you have a design phase, but like have the costs already set without, you know, basically knowing?
What the cost will be?
Yeah.
That's how the government does it.
There's no.
They will tell you to.
There's no adjustment to it after they get through the design phase and say, okay.
There might be. It's, it is, I'm sorry, Counselor.
10%.
It's okay. I'm just, I'm
She's perplexed.
The bridge isn't even ADA compliant. They need to be able to like change the bridge and bring the bridge up to compliance. So then is it gonna match what's down below after all this? Or are we just in a mad circle?
Even be compliant with their own laws.
I'm sorry, sorry.
It's like launching to the moon. It was all done in lowest bid.
Well, and the, and the shoring is, I mean, it's basically about shoring the, the piers more than the bridge itself.
But if they get rid of the bridge, they'll get rid of the piers. Then, but then, but then the state will be responsible.
Yeah.
Or back again at taxpayers expense, expense.
Yeah, of course.
There, there's a lot of, of, I would say contingencies involved with this. The Corps will tell us that they will, to the maximum extent possible, involve us in the design phase, but in the end, it's up to them how to do it.
Do you realize if the bridge goes out, 8,000 cars are going by your house today?
I know. Um, yeah, well, and, yeah, I don't, yeah, it would be nice to have a little more clarity on what stop the project means. Are they gonna stop with half the dam out and just call it good? Or I mean, I, I'm just, you know, I'm asking for a friend.
Like, you know, there's gotta be some point where you can't stop without causing more trouble.
I feel like I've been here a little too long and I don't have any trust of any of this.
Well, I think we'll have to make sure, you know, that the paragraphs, there's, there's a lot of pages to this, but
Right.
There's only about two that really, I mean,
Yeah.
truly matter. And that is during the construction phase of how things work. The question will be exactly what are our responsibilities? If we do get to this point where all of a sudden there's a gotcha.
Yeah.
That no one knew and who's responsible for that gotcha.
Yeah.
Well, it's kind of a gotcha anyway, because it's, they were gonna take the dam out regardless, right?
I don't know if they were or not.
Well.
I, I think they were.
It's, it's a, we can say no, but if it ever fails, we're on our own. So it's kind of like, we do have a choice, but not really.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
We have a choice.
And so it's like, wouldn't it be?
We have a choice. It's gonna cost us a lot or we can try to do it now.
I'm sure this was let for a reason.
I'm pretty sure you're right, but.
The government doesn't work without reasons, even though they may be obscure. So I guess my comment to you is stay tuned. I will be talking to Elliot. I have some questions that basically the questions I have are what you raised.
Right.
Our attorney will be reviewing it just to confirm that information. And then that will be given to you so that you can see what it is.
Thank you.
That you're dealing with.
And we're not the only ones dealing with dams. They're talking about taking down the lower snake dams, taking them out. Those are huge dams. Oh, yeah.
For seismic?
No, for salmon.
Same, same thing.
Yeah. Got it.
Yeah.
And they're, and they're talking about taking all the turbines out of all the other dams.
Wow, that's big. That is a huge.
Yeah.
Expensive ordeal.
That's okay. No more electric vehicles, I guess.
I don't know what's going on.
Okay.
All right. Anyway, that's the status on, on the 1135. In a surprise email from Susan Patterson, she is the grant writer at the Council of Governments. Might be a good opportunity to, I've been looking at their IGA for grant writing. They have come up with, the ODOT has come up with a grant that would basically, which is just, someone looked at our bridge, our pedestrian bridge and our situation and then said, we're gonna fund pedestrian bridge that meets these criteria. So I am meeting with Susan
Good.
this week. I am going to probably bring that IGA to you because I think that's probably worthwhile. Now, the thing is, these do have cost shares. This is, remember, the estimate was a $3.2 million project. I need to find out if these are state funds or federal funds or a mix and what we can use for matching on this. We may have to come up with some of our own, but I'll tell you, to get a project like that of that magnitude and that importance to the city is probably pretty big.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna, I will definitely be, this is, is big. This is something that would be of huge significance to the city of Monroe. But that just fell into my lap last Friday.
And we won't have to worry about ADA compliant bridge river.
Well, I mean, at least we have another vehicle for other things, other infrastructure that needs to be taken care of. And I mean, that's just, that's the hardest thing, you know, we want good things for our citizens and we want great things for our community, but it's really hard when we have the budget that we have. And so trying to make that happen is really difficult. And with, a lot of times, things have been done in the past with great expectations and wonderful things, but when you get down the road, you don't realize kind of the legacy that it's leaving. And it's not that we don't want things for people. It's just that there, we were never, the city never grew for a very, very long time. And so in that, we've got some things we have to pay for and stuff that needs to happen that have kind of put us behind. And so it, it makes it just really difficult, you know, because it's like, that would be awesome. Are we gonna have the money to do it?
Well, the, the other part of it is this bridge design was also made to carry water and waste.
Exactly.
Which means we now have federal infrastructure dollars that might be able to supplement what the, what they can give us. So.
Was really important for us to have for that.
Have that boat. And it will also provide enough capacity for a service vehicle to get across as well. So we have emergency capacity to get to our water plant. So the stars, the stars may align. I don't want to get everyone excited, but you never know. This, the stars may align.
Nice to get the services out of there.
Yeah, because even if ODOT did, you know, give us a better walking path on that bridge, it kind of is a path to nowhere because they don't, you know, obviously there's no sidewalk on the side of the highway there.
We can't do anything about that, right?
Yeah, and it is, regardless, is still a dangerous walk.
Yeah.
Even if they did widen it. So this would, this would do exactly what a Riverside District overlay master plan wanted us to do. It would get people down into the downtown core. You know, where our businesses are. And I think it's a win-win for a lot of folks. So definitely big news on that.
Thank you.
So, and the last one is our path grant. I've been working on trying to get, when we first did this, this came out of work that was done about because of how grants work. It really came out about two and a half years ago. And so our costs were still, even though we had a lot of contingency, it was, it's, it's more than what we have in our grant at the moment. So I have one more try, but you know, ODOT's bugging me about it, but even though it's a $384,000 grant, we're looking at between five and 600,000 with the asphalt and everything else. Unfortunately, ODOT engineers like asphalt. They like everything done the way it is. Now, there is an alternative. So not giving up on the path, but utilizing the same techniques we used at Red Hills.
The quarter rounds?
Right, with the, with the one quarter minus.
One quarter minus.
Yeah, packed one quarter minus to put an eight foot wide path in for under $10,000. That would give a nice usable ADA surface. As I, I did a presentation, I haven't shown you this, but I was part of a presentation that the state of Oregon, that ODOT presented on alternative uses. And I, they showcased our, our path. And so ODOT's actually now beginning to think about this as an alternative. What I mentioned was that asphalt, you know, all these wonderful projects are great, but we have to maintain them
Yeah.
afterwards. And that's the, the gotcha is you have to maintain it. With this, we can maintain ourselves at relatively low cost to the, to the city as, instead of having to go 10 years for an asphalt surface, not putting much money aside, and then all of a sudden find out that we have to go fix it. I mean, where have we come up with that scenario before? Surprise. So I'm working on that alternative for you. Something is actually doable within our reserves and within our SDCs and other things. So, and it would not cost that much. That would include, you know, some railing, bollards, crossing, you know, all, all that good stuff.
And that's for the path going toward the park? Or what, what is that?
This is the, from Kelly.
Oh, the old railroad?
Yeah, behind the Wilbur Ellis, all the way, say, down the cemetery.
Yeah.
Oh, that'd be so cool.
We'd put, would we paint crosswalks on pine and things?
Yes, we would.
Places like that.
Yeah, we, we would, we would, we would still put the, the things up, but it moves from, I've talked to Knife River in, and they would give us a break on that. I've talked to PPNL and they maybe will, they put up some, we'll pay for the electricity, but they'll put up the LED lights to make it safe.
Wow.
There, there is a lot of encouragement from PP and actually, they actually asked me to put in for one of their grants. They have $25,000 grants for that. T-Mobile also has community grants up to $25,000. So these, this might be a more, I'm looking for sustainable things. I think our conversations over time, and I hate to give the money back.
Right.
On the same token, they're asking us to do a gold plated thing and yeah, inflation over the last few years.
Not possible.
Everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the quarter minus packed, do we pack it with any kind of resin or?
No, what, you know, what, if you'd like to go up to Red Hills.
Yeah.
That's now.
I'm trying, I remember you talking about that when we did that and I can't remember if we.
We didn't do resin. We did a stabilizer. Stabilizers are a resin that you can apply on. And you can do that. That's, that's pretty good. But what we did was we basically laid out four inches of it. The fire department came and used their
sprayed it down.
Put, yeah, sprayed it down, did some training and sprayed it down. Then Mark got on his roller and he was so happy and rolled the whole thing from, and then, and if you go up there, it is as hard as pavement.
It's awesome. It's really cool.
And, and the residents love it.
How long, or how far of the pathway is the lights gonna cover?
I would cover the entire length.
All the way up to the.
Yeah, but there and then probably have enough to put a little bit of a parking lot on the, on the cemetery roadside.
Wow.
Okay.
Okay. And we could even start considering a small parking, start building our North Gate area as well.
For a little farmer's market area.
Phase it. Don't, we don't. Phase it. Don't, we don't have to go.
Right, crazy.
I think the lights all the way out there will, I, I just see that generating more interest. So.
And make it safer and also.
Feel safer.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, it'll generate more interest for people to build into the.
Yes.
Down there.
I agree.
What, what would the L E D lights look like? I'm trying to imagine, are they posts or are they in the?
Like the, there's two ways that we, we can do. With like a street lamp type thing. Yeah, those, we could put a post in.
Okay.
Okay. P P and L was gonna meet with me. I, they were gonna meet with me two weeks ago. But we weren't able to connect, but they were gonna look at replacing some of our lights in town, add some more. And I was gonna talk, we were gonna talk about that path and also the S R T S path.
Oh, I have one quick question on that pathway. There's an old screw conveyor bed that.
Gonna have to get filled.
Well, it's, it's full of water right now. And one of the boards has been, looked like a truck went over it and broke it. Um, there were some kids trying to crawl in there. We had to chase them away.
Mark, okay, so hang on just one second, I'm gonna answer your question.
Okay.
That's, it was, it was relayed to Mark. And he says, okay, he's gonna say today was the swing sets. Out here, we had graffiti and a broken chain. Tomorrow is the, is the blank. Okay.
Yeah, because there were some kids playing around there and we had to go run them away, because one of them got in there, it'd be really hard to get them out.
It would be, it would be, they could, if they went ahead first, that would be it.
Yeah, so.
Steve, is the toddler park open now?
Ah, yes, it is.
Okay, good.
Yeah, it is now back open again.
I vote.
And we're reviewing the tapes.
Okay, good.
I vote for cute lights if they have any laying around. Welcoming now, always your coming to town from the north.
It really, it really would, but very, very nice.
It would just look adorable.
If they have amber coloring, but instead of bright white, amber would be best.
That would be really nice.
Up by your house, we would put some big.
Orange ones? Orange and black. Forward to, because it gets really dark and with that very.
It does. And, and I like this idea a little better, because it is something the city of Monroe with some volunteer help. And I'm saying also contractors, our local folks are willing to do a little bit and get them involved. Again, we missed them. I know, I, I know they all, Mr. Ellsworth, Kipco, Seth Brown, you know, they, they, they all work with us and give us great deals. And I, I love to get them involved in these things. And some of our bigger corporate folks are also willing. So this might be like stone soup, literally. And we might be able to get our stone and what we need and get a good result.
That would be cool.
I just want to let you know, I was very disappointed to start seeing those come in. I did it verbally and, you know, just kind of informally to make sure we didn't have to commit to spending money. But it, e- even, even as a conservative, here's what we might be looking at their way to.
Hmm, wow.
So, and heads and tails with ransom money and making, making, making Monroe better again. There we go.
You wanna get some hats?
Yeah, we're not even going there. Nonpartisan.
Nope.
Okay.
One last thing, we are in the process of hiring. And the Oregon Association of Water Utilities, meeting with Heather of their brand new apprenticeship program that they have adopted from the National Association of Water Utilities. And they are very anxious to get us on board as they're, one of their first apprenticesites. So our utility one can participate in this.
That's amazing. Would be awesome.
And also I said we would have room for one more to bring in from a high school or someone else. It, we do pay for part of it, but they also pay for all the training and everything else.
Wow.
So this is how you get your water one and two and all that without having the issues that we've had.
Question about that. So when we get the apprentices, do they, like typically, from what you know about this program, and maybe we don't know much about it yet. Do they end up staying with their apprentice site long term, or is this really just kind of like the next step into their career and they go elsewhere?
So in the case of our utility one, they would stay here.
Okay.
If we brought another apprentice in, we might hire them, because they might really want to stay here, or they might hire somewhere else, and we get another person for a couple of years.
Oh, yeah. So either way, we're, it'll.
Kind of like a paid internship type situation.
Awesome. While they're going.
They have to have a commitment while going through. And that's the key, is they have to have a commitment with us.
Okay.
Very exciting.
Yeah.
And that also fell into my lap, that fell into my lap first, and then the, this new bridge grant.
It's amazing.
That was a good way to end the week.
It's exciting.
Anything else?
I did that one question.
Okay, go ahead.
We have a crowd strike problems.
No, we did not. The only issue we had Friday was I had a brute force attack on the website admin. It didn't down the website, but I have something called loganizer, if you're familiar with WordPress, that detects that and shuts down the admin portion. So during an Economic Development Committee meeting, I just simply went and changed the line in, for those of you that know WordPress, H T access, to deny all. And for about an hour, we were offline while the bots scurried to someone else to attack. And then I re-enabled it after the meeting and we're back in business again. And I went to logs and put all their full range of, they use a whole range of I P addresses to attack us with. They alternated them, so I blocked their whole range. We're back in business. So, but the crowd strike, no, we don't.
What Bill Walker did was shut everything down. At one, I saw the, the, or crowd strikes done.
I had. What a mess.
Command how to fix it.
Yeah, but we were not affected by that.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, well, let's move on to the consent agenda. So the following items are considered to be routine and will be, will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. If any item involves a potential conflict of interest, council members should so note before adoption of the consent agenda. A motion to accept the consent agenda is appropriate.
Well, since I went through this at home, I'm going to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as written. I didn't see anything outstanding.
I'll second it.
Scared me.
Yeah, same. Any other, I'm gonna give everybody a couple of minutes here to catch up. If you have any questions, and if not, you're good, okay?
I'm good.
You're good? Counselor Williams, what about you?
I'm good.
Okay, any questions before we vote?
Not, none of my part.
Okay, let's vote then. Counselor Lindner.
Yes.
Counselor Cutterson.
Yes.
Counselor Rich.
Yes.
Counselor Myers.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Great, thank you. So we are now on to the land use hearing. So give me a moment to switch gears. Okay, so we've got, make sure you got your staff report.
The other part of it, six dot one oh five additions would normally be attached to this, but I put them in your packet added time. So that you could refer to them as well.
Okay, I'm actually. Okay, so we have a land use hearing. It's, okay, a land use hearing is conducted for the purpose of accepting any and all public comment prior to the deliberating deciding on a recommendation to adopt changes to the Monroe Land Use Code regarding short-term rentals and designated city zones. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and I'm gonna see here. Okay, I have some reading to do. Okay. Let's see here, all right. All right, so I'm gonna describe the order of proceedings here. So the order of tonight's proceedings shall be the applicant's presentation, staff report, public testimony in favor of the application, public testimony in opposition of the application, neutral testimony of the application, the planning commission, well, in this case, the city council deliberations, and then the final decision. Let's see here. Do we have anybody that's gonna be testifying tonight?
We may have some comment. Yes, I think I missed the gross.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and I'll, for those testifying or commenting this evening, please keep your comments to three minutes if you would, I'd appreciate that. And do we want her to go ahead and do it now, or we want her to wait until?
No, yeah, at this point, you'll move us into the hearing.
Okay.
And, and then we go into staff report.
Okay, so let me do that. So I'm gonna go ahead and I'm gonna open our land use meeting for, at six forty two P M. So the public hearing is now open. Okay, so I do need to ask, do any members of the city council wish to declare any conflicts of interest?
I feel like I should declare a conflict of interest, because I might have interest in this in the future, if that makes sense. I don't currently, you, you not think so? I don't know. I'm, I don't have any, I don't have any plan, but.
If you don't have any plans.
Okay.
And you don't have anything currently.
I don't.
You know.
Maybe in five years, but three to five years.
Okay.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I'm being ethical and, okay.
Okay, the next question I have to ask, do any members of the city council wish to declare any ex parte contacts?
What does that mean? I'm sorry, ex parte contacts?
Um, meaning that you have met with people that have some influence on the decision.
Sorry, thank you, I don't.
That's all right. No, it's good question. Okay, doesn't sound like anybody does. All right. All right, does anyone from the public wish to refute these disclosures of conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts? I don't think so. Everybody's like, okay, we're cool. All right. So I'm gonna go ahead and read, let's see here. I'll read this. Land use decisions such as the case under consideration this evening are evaluated against applicable criteria from the municipal code and comprehensive plan. The applicable criteria for this case are found in the staff report, which is available as a handout at the door. Okay, so if you haven't gotten it, it's a room. Yep, we're there at the table. Uh, all right, so this is a good time to remind those testifying that you should direct your testimony toward the applicable criteria of the case or other criteria in the municipal code or comprehensive plan, which you believe to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accommodated by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the city or other parties the opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeals to the state land use board of appeals based on that issue. The failure of the applicant to raise constitutional other issues related relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient detail to allow the local government to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Okay, we will now hear the applicant's presentation.
Well, the applicant in this case is in fact the city of Monroe. Yes, so it's a little unusual. Normally, what we're doing is really a type three legislative land use hearing. This is typical for councils, since you are the ones that make the rules, the ordinances, the laws of the town. So this has been a request by several folks in town over time who have been required about using an A D U, for instance, as a short-term rental. For instance, Mystic Rosen to utilize her area above her business as a short-term rental by the Niestrums, who are, as you know, tearing down a building, but also would like to build a similar mixed-use structure with retail below and perhaps short-term rentals above. So this has been something over the last, it's been gaining steam over the last year to year and a half in the, in the council. So those are the public comments that we have received. So in essence, what we're doing today is reviewing the code that we have looked at at our ordinance committee that we've talked about off and on, went to the ordinance committee. So we started off at the beginning of the year, talking about this in council. We went to an ordinance committee meeting where we looked at the actual code that we might be putting in place. There were some modifications to that. That went to the planning commission, which we are required to, to make sure that we have the recommendations from them. Based upon their recommendations, I relayed those recommendations to council during a work session. You were not capable making a decision, but you were all in general agreement that those were, were good recommendations for the planning commission. And so those are all embodied here tonight. What we're essentially doing, before I get into the staff report, is that we are allowing short-term rentals in the city of Monroe. We have three classes of short-term rentals. The first one is under three bedrooms, three, up to three bedrooms at one time. And that would be a type one decision. So in other words, there's gonna be a permit, there's gonna be an application process, a permit. That would be reviewed by the city administrator, and if it fits the criteria, it's permitted. We're also placing on this a cap. The, the agreement was about ten citywide to start with. Up to five of those, maybe what we call a type B. In this case, I call it a B one, which is a type two decision. And we can have up to five of those. Those be typically your whole house, kind of Airbnb type rentals. So the type A is a, what we call a ministerial review, is basically just looking at the, the code and the permit structure. And if it, that you will see in six dot one oh five, the, the use code in, in your packet. And if it meets it, they, and it's within, and we don't have ten units in town. There you go. They, they get a permit and they also will then sign up for the lodging tax and all those things that we will, we still need to deal with. But that's, that's what happens in that respect. Yes, counselor.
Oh, so A one and B one, it sounds like they're referring specifically to residential zones. And then B two is in commercial or mixed use.
A B, yes.
Okay.
B one is where you want up to five rooms. Okay, so it's larger, it's a larger. And so that's a type two. A type two, in this case, looks at the neighborhood, it looks at the, we, the city actually, let's see. That the city actually sends out the notices to people around that. We're looking at parking, we're looking at a, a number of small things, but not that rises to a type three decision, where, where we have to have a full land use like we are right now. And a type B two, as Counselor Rich pointed out, is where we have a commercial mixed use. So this would be like what Mystic Rosen would have, for instance, or the Niestrums, if they, if they get to that point and they wish to build something back there. So a type B two is really a, a, it doesn't have, it's not a type three. It's also a type two decision, trying to keep the cost and availability down, because the Riverside District Overlay already allows commercial and residential use. Okay, so what we're saying is, is that B two is really only in a mixed use. Okay, so if someone has a house and a residential's on a commercial zone, it does not, this does not apply to that. It's in a mixed use zone where you have a commercial, it has to be in concert with an existing commercial activity. So this day's operation, that's the poster child for that. What Laurie Stevens, the architect for the Niestrums, talked with me about, that would be fitting perfectly. So that's what we're doing, is we're encouraging the downtown core businesses to be able to have this, this mixed use of activity that really sounds like it would generate some income for the town. And also some more, more interest in being a destination for all the things that we have.
And it's in alignment with our whole Riverside master.
Yes, it is, absolutely.
We've been talking about mixed use, commercial, residential for a long time.
The overlay and the comprehensive plan both.
So that is, and the, it also meets the criteria of trying to keep this as simple as possible, yet also ensure that we are planning. And in the staff report, I'll go into a few of the details that help us meet those goals.
And it's a consistent framework, like it would be, everybody would be addressed similarly based on their, their situation.
Right.
It wouldn't be this like case by case, one-off stuff.
Right, it's, it's defined as to where they should be and how it should be.
Makes sense.
Okay. Any other counselors have any other questions before we have them go into the staff? Steve goes into the staff report. Okay, all right, Steve, we'll go ahead and we'll hear now about the staff report.
So the staff report, I've already given you part of this, because, well. So uh, the staff report, um, I've already given you um, part of this because, well, the applicant and the staff report are somewhat the same. Um, as you know, currently, we do not allow accessory short-term rentals as a permitted activity within our code. Meaning you have to go to, you have to go to the planning commission, you have no choice as a type-three and go through the entire conditional use process. Um, what we're attempting to do at this point is eliminate those barriers to that. Uh, so the, at the ordinance committee, we came up with the short-term accessory short-term rental code. Um, it went to the planning committee on July first, they made five key recommendations to the council. One was reduce the residence residency requirements from two hundred and seventy days to one hundred and eighty days. Increase the allowable rentable rooms from two to three for a type-A one, short-term rental. Allow more than three rooms to be rented, uh, example, a whole house. And decrease the level of review to minimize a type-three land use decision. And then invoke a cap on the number of short-term rentals at any given time, which um, in this document is ten. Citywide, up to five could be whole-house um, rentals or mixed-use rentals. And that would be reviewed annually by, by council, the cap would be reviewed and it could be done by petition as well. So there's a, if someone wishes to come in and say, hey, folks, can I be number eleven? You would have the ability to make that review.
It, may I comment on the fact, just that it's interesting that it's um, it's actually more generous toward property owners than we had originally proposed, which I find very modern.
There, there was, there was quite a bit of a discussion about, in planning commission about making it that way for two reasons. One, they felt that Monroe could work within that cap. Then two, it could be changed.
Yeah.
Uh, three, they wanted to minimize the barriers. I thought those were all worthy, worthy goals.
I do have one question.
Yes.
It doesn't look, we, we have residency uh, requirements for the owner of the house. But we don't have anything really defining what short-term, what qualifies as short-term.
Um, so the, the decision, you need to go to your packet to six one oh five.
Okay, so it is in there?
Yes.
I was kind of zipping through that real quick. I'm just, because I'm curious, if, if someone rents it short-term and then all of a sudden those people like to stay and they talk to the owner and like a whole house.
They would.
Then it would just be a long.
Do you have, do you have a process for identifying that and doing?
Well, what they would do, what, what, what they would have to do because they're gonna get taxed, they would have to come back to us and say, we're no longer using this as a short-term rental, please don't tax us anymore or charge us a permit fee, otherwise they get charged a permit.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was asking.
So, so there's a monetary incentive for them to come back and
And then that's.
Otherwise, we could tax them.
Right.
Legally, that's unless they come back.
Because that's what they permitted for.
Yeah, permitted for. Uh, so uh, under the decision criteria finding a fact, um, what we're really doing is now kind of aligning our request with the with our land use code. In this, in essence, the, for this particular requirement, we're not looking at a piece of property that's gonna be used one way or the other. But we do want to make sure that the proposed development, or in this case, the activity is compatible with the land use zone, the surrounding area potential impacts have been mitigated to the maximum extent possible. That last sentence will probably be stricken and revised in the next few years by the state of Oregon because it's not objective and clear the way they'd like it to be. However, we are restricting the short-term rentals to twin-dwelling city, ten-dwelling city-wide. Renting whole homes up to five bedrooms will be limited to five and counted as part of the total cap. In other words, we are restricting how the impact of these until we have a good idea of what, what that means. Um, the Riverside District overlay is one of the biggest pieces to this because that impacts um, much of our comprehensive plan as well as where many of these rentals will be. Um, so in essence, with, with uh, the um, overlay zone, uh, what we're going to be doing is we're going to allow it um, subject to a type-two land use review, which is not as stringent as the type-three. And um, again, uh, basically just ensures, in this case, because six one oh five, your packet says that we are going to allow this in Riverside District as part of this mixed-use process. So that's what the type-two does, is ensure that it is part of that, it's not someone's home that's in this district that they want to set up as a short-term rental. Uh, our land use goals and policies primarily, this impacts our economic development pieces. It also impacts um, our master plan, Riverside District Master Plan, our river-facing, trying to get folks into town. Um, make Monroe more of a destination place. Allow people to come into town when they're visiting and have a, a place, a nice place to stay that was brought up by the planning commission. Um, help with developing our downtown area.
Yeah.
Really, you get people into our downtown and have them stay and walk around.
Spend money.
This is, it may not be a lot at the moment, but it's going to, it's, it's those things that encourage us at tipping point that encourages other businesses to come in and want to be here. And this is just one of the mix, we talked about that Economic Development Committee. You know, there's puzzle pieces that need to go in place to get that, that drive to get that ten percent off the highway to come visit us. This is one of them. Specifically, uh, we have some things that we need to do in our codes, and this is on page four. We need to, uh, we have a new land use section, six dot one oh five, it's in your packet. Um, this will be added to the section in our code, this reserved, it says reserved for future use. Well, I just found a future use for six dot one oh five. Uh, so this code will go in there. Um, we have a couple of articles, the four dot one 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 and four dot one two one are in our land, our zoning codes. And uh, one of them is, we're gonna change accessory buildings may be used for short-term rentals for the standards of Article Six. In other words, if you have a garage that you would like to convert that meets the standards of Article Six, six one oh five, it would be allowed. The same way with um, um, ADUs, we're gonna eliminate six dot one hundred B. Um, we're gonna allow, which basically says these have to be owner-occupied, so that sentence goes away because we're now going to allow ADUs per six dot one oh five uh, to be rented. Either the owner can live in the A D U and rent out their entire house.
Or vice versa.
Wow.
So it gives a lot of flexibility to folks.
Either way, it requires a owner-occupy, um, uh, or owner living on the premises of one of the two.
The only area that that does not apply is a commercial. Because commercial space, in the commercial space, the requirement is in six one oh five, is that you still have to have, it has to be in conjunction with a commercial activity.
Oh, right.
Right, so rather than the owner has to reside, the, the commercial activity in the mixed use has to be there.
So like an example would be the, the um, why can I not think of it? What the Paulsons had briefly for a while, if they chose to do some kind of short-term rental above, i- if they're still there, but like whatever, sorry, no words, that's a commercial space.
Yes.
That would, that will be selling goods and products downtown or downstairs, it'll be kind of like what Misty Croson is doing.
Sure, if they wanted to put it, and if they can meet the building codes, they have to meet building codes.
Building codes, right, but then they could still have like a rental behind it or above it or.
Big loft rental, that'd be kind of cool.
It's like a crow's nest.
Like an industrial space. Like in a, in a grain silo kind of thing would be really cool.
Yes, or Misty Croson's um, activity is, is perfect, um, what the Niestrums wish to do. Um, this could encourage a whole lot of that kind of activity, which really does promote our Riverside District master plan.
You could rent out the bank safe, just kidding.
So tho- those are the, those are the main changes in, in our, in our code, it's not a huge amount of, of additions.
Where would the cocoa station go though?
Okay, cool.
That's important.
It is.
So i- in the end, I did not find that ten units, as a staff looking at that and listening to council and planning commission, uh, that ten units uh, at this point in time would have a adverse impact on town. Um, it is under the city's control, uh, the council's control as to how that is, so there is um, some ability for you to regulate, you know, going forward and, and monitor it so we don't get out of control like a, a lot of towns did, particularly on the coast. And it also um, really matches up well with promoting our Riverside District Master Plan and the planning that's been done on the city over the last several years. So uh, the recommendation is to approve it. Uh, the recommended motion is on page five at the end, and um, with that, we'll go on to um, the testimony.
Good, so. Thank you, Steve. Is there any other questions of Steve before we dive into that? We'll have another opportunity to ask questions after the testimony, so. Not a problem there, okay. Okay, all right, we will now move to a public testimony, beginning with testimony in favor of the application. Please provide any written materials you wish to be part of the official record to the city planner, in this case it would be Steve. Uh, does anyone, is there anyone in favor of the application wish to speak? Come on down, go ahead and uh, address with your name.
My name is Misty Croson and um, I have the Christmas Junction store and of course I'm in favor, I know that's a surprise. And one of the things that I have experienced, just so you guys know, I get a lot of people from out of state passing through and one of the chief complaints is that there's nothing local for them to stay. Um, so I mean, as far as the opportunity, I hear it all the time, especially from June until the end of the year, it's asked all the time. Um, but to be very uh, technical, I kind of did a bunch of research, plus I am an Airbnb person. I mean, whenever I go on a vacation, I do not, I, if I can avoid staying in a hotel, I do not stay in a hotel. I mostly stay in nice little neighborhoods and I've talked to neighbors on all of these, I mean, whether it be Hawaii, seaside, Arizona, wherever. And I have yet to run into a neighbor that has complained because the houses are very well-maintained. Um, because nobody's gonna want to pay to stay in a house that's rundown, has a crappy yard, that the interior's not updated. In fact, people get very picky about it, they want all the amenities and they expect it to be really nice, even though they're getting a little bit more of a price break from if they were staying at a hotel, plus they have more space. Um, but just real quick, because I know I have to keep it three minutes. Um, some basic benefits of a short-term rental or Airbnb in my case, I mean, because that's basically what I am looking at, is a Christmas-themed Airbnb. I know that's a surprise. Um, but the biggest thing is it provides local lodging, not only for people coming through, but I, I've talked to several residents that when their families come in for the holidays or even for the summer, they don't have enough room and they're sending them to Corvallis. They don't really want to, I hate to say this, they don't want to send them Junction City because the choices aren't prime, so they're sending them to Eugene. And so there's nothing really close by, I can't provide a huge place, it's a two-bedroom, one-bath, but at least it's something for a few people, you know, for short, short-term. Um, tourists passing through, I had a couple from New York's uh, that were here for the Olympic trials. They took the train all the way from New York and they said they had a heck of a time finding a place in Eugene and they would have loved to stay out here. They said the town was super cute. Um, with all of our outdoor bicycle enthusiasts that are passing through, always, always, always looking for something and you know, and they would prefer something with a smaller footprint, they don't want to stay in a big hotel. Um, it increases tourism, like Steve said, the biggest thing with increasing some tourism, it's gonna increase all of our businesses, the restaurants, my business, the thrift store, and when our business is increased, we have to increase our hours. If we were increasing our hours, we have to hire somebody. I would love to get to a point where I hire somebody. Right now, it's me, myself and I, but it will naturally happen and when we hire, the first thing we're gonna look at is people in the community because their commute's less, they're gonna be more reliable, so that's killing a bunch of birds with one stone. We're providing a few more jobs for local community people. Um, and like Steve said, it creates a need for more businesses because you're gonna have, oh wait, we need this, we need that. And more people are gonna be coming from bigger areas to come into a smaller town because they have that niche. They, you know, if somebody else doesn't have it, they can capture it and it just makes their business thrive even more. Um, also, it reduces a larger footprint, you don't have to rely on somebody putting up a small hotel or a little motel. You know, little houses here and there, you have yards, I mean, it, it's environmentally more friendly if, you know, if people really looked at it in that direction. Um, it helps introduce our community, we have a huge ad community and I'm telling you what, when people are around, they love toodling around all the backroads, they're like, this is fascinating and they can talk to locals. A lot of locals like to tell them all the things that we have to offer, all the hiking places, shopping, you know, all the wineries.
Yeah.
I get a lot of people, they're like, we're touring the wines, where can we stay close? Um, and we don't have anything and I just think that's something we really need. Um, it also does maintain the community. Um, speaking from Miami, retail is a little bit different than residential, but again, they expect the houses to look nice, they expect the yards to look nice. So it encourages the owner of the short-term rental to maintain their area a little bit better because they're trying to sell, you know, sell rooms basically. Um, I know people do have some um, disagreements um, that sometimes like with traffic. The thing is, it's very short, you're having people come in, they're spending, they're staying short-term. The tourism, they're staying for a few days, they're spending their money, they're infusing our community and then they're leaving. Um, or if they fall in love, if their house is for, if there's a house for sale, it will increase the chances that someone can sell their house quicker because that person that saw this community, they're like, as soon as a house comes on the market, I want to be here. And so it actually helps someone trying to sell their house. Um, one of the things that we need to make sure though is cars. I have no problem having a restriction on cars, you know, depending on how many bedrooms uh, allow, you know, like with me, I would never want more than two cars. You know, I definitely want to have restrictions on how many people I can stay there. And that is something that if you are doing short-term rental, you should not have a problem with that. Because you don't want five cars parked out in front of a house that would normally only have two. Um, and then also, um, as far as um, wear and tear on a neighborhood, you're gonna have less people staying in a short-term rental than you would somebody living in a house. Because if whoever, if somebody lives in a house, there is no restrictions on how many people live in that house. You can have a three-bedroom, but you can have eight, eight people, you know. There's, and there's not, not, no rule that says what you can and can't have if you own or long-term rent that house. You can have five or six cars, short-term rentals, you're only gonna pretty much have what that house sleeps. And most people, it's like two to a bed max. So if you have three bedrooms, you know, you might have six people, two cars. You know, and so it, it, there, it, there's, it's a little bit nicer for neighborhoods to have some more rules on that. And like I said, for some of us that want to do this, some rules are good. It maintains it and it keeps it, you know, intact, but so that's, that's all I have to say, but thank you for listening and um, I do hope you guys vote for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other testimony in favor? Okay. All right, does anyone, is anyone in opposition to the application wish to speak? Okay. All right. Is there any neutral testimony? Okay. Okay, uh, does any council member have any further questions of staff?
Um, so this would update the the land use policy.
Land use code.
Okay.
So would add sec, it would add language that you have in your packet, six dot one oh five is now um, basically a reserved section, this would now fill it with that material. And then the um, items under the um, land use, actually the zoning would be changed to allow um, and then. Short-term rentals and also would remove the restrictions on owner-occupied ADUs.
Okay, uh, basically what I was getting at is, so uh, this would update that, but then what is the next steps as far as, because I know then there's an application of some sort that gets developed based on the criteria in here that says.
So, so the.
You got your fire alarms and your, or smoke detectors, whatever.
So what happens, so what happens next is, is that I give a copy of this to uh, D L C D. Um, they will review it, this is not a land use decision per se, it's a legislative addition, I don't, they'll just review it, if I don't hear back from them, then that's good, that there, it's just a.
No news is good news.
I'm required to give it to them. This would not take effect for thirty days regardless.
Okay.
Just like any of our ordinances or anything else. Um, so at the next council meeting, um, what I will do is we have, we have the lodging tax to deal with. Um, and then I'll be developing the permits, forms and all that. I've already talked with Benton County, um, and they are, uh, the new building inspector. And she's going to be pulling um, what they call life and safety uh, report, she did that in Texas where she came from. And what a life and safety is, is basically what you see there about the rooms, is the, does the room be code for, 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 for being a bedroom? Um, do they have smoke detectors? And if there's a source of carbon monoxide, do you have carbon working carbon monoxide detectors? That would be a permit that would. That would be a permit that would be pulled from Benton County. So I have that in the works. And so this next month, that material would be put up in place. The permit is essentially employing the same material that City of Portland has used. Because this is based on theirs.
So we'll probably see it at work session and then, and then.
Yeah.
It would, it would be at council as long as.
Yeah, it's, it's, the permitting is more of the administrative side of it. It just simply makes sure that the, that the criteria is dealt with. Permitting is done.
Okay.
Just looking through here, I don't believe we have a request for a continuance, do we?
Request for what?
A continuance.
I have not received any.
Okay. Request to hold the record open?
I've not received any unless someone in this room wishes to.
Well, I can ask the applicant of waiving their right to submit additional written arguments.
I think we've submitted. Okay, that would mean the council could, you know, that's, this would be the point where you say, hey, we need to put this on hold, like tabling it. When you put this on hold because I would really like more information on this. So that's, that's what this.
So I'm supposed to ask the question, does the applicant waive a seven-day period to submit additional written argument?
I'm perfectly happy. Okay. If, if the council, the applicant is perfectly happy.
I'm happy.
I'm happy.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing then. It is seven thirteen. We are now closed on the public hearing. Okay, so we need to deliberate. How do we feel about this?
I support it.
Motion, support it. So we need to make a motion.
I move to adopt the findings outlined in the decision criteria as presented in the staff report. Or as modified by the planning commission and amend the Monroe land use code to allow accessory short-term rentals with the provisions and conditions as prescribed.
I'll second.
Thank you. All right, let's see here.
This is not a resolution or whatever.
All right, any other comments or questions before we vote? Okay, Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Myers.
Yes.
Counselor Rich.
Yes.
Counselor Cuthbertson.
Yes.
Counselor Lindner.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. There you go.
We're getting to, I don't know, it feels like we talked about this like for a few months, so.
I do need to read this one, one little bit here at the very end.
Making some progress.
Any participant not satisfied with this decision may have the determination reviewed by the Land Use Board of Appeals. L U V A under ordinance one ninety-seven dot eight-two-eight to one ninety-seven dot eight-four-five by filing a notice of intent to appeal with L U V A not later than twenty-one days after the decision, after the decision becomes official, I guess. Okay, so we're done. Okay. Thank you all very much. So we're done with that. Going back to agenda.
Thank you for the work on that.
You're welcome.
Yes. Okay.
Thanks, Griffin.
The executive session.
Yep, all right.
Tonight's the mayor's notebook of.
It's like everyone knows.
You gotta make sure you're doing it right.
We have online besides.
Maybe Commissioner Eastridge, perhaps?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Thank you, Ray.
We'll just read it out and then we can.
The commissioner into the waiting room.
Okay. All right, let me go ahead and read the script here. The Monroe City Council will now meet in executive session pursuant to ordinance one ninety-two dot six-six-zero, section two subsection F. Which allows the council to meet an executive session to review written advice from the city attorney regarding documents for the Monroe Community Library. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations or anything said about these subjects during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room if there's an audience to bring back. So there you go. Okay, do we need to, the door is okay the way it is?
I'm at a good position to watch it.
Okay, and so we, we actually have paperwork here.
I know Lori is not joining us, but.
Yes, she gave us.
But, but we got her memo.
Right, she has this memo and this is the evening. I also provided you in your packet with the city council minutes from July twenty-second, twenty thirteen, which accepted the deed. Which you see on the backpack at the quitclaim deed and also the Monroe Library property easement that's been referenced, so. Basically, except for the I G itself, you have the, what I asked her was to review this easement. And provide us guidance. The best question to ask her was, what would happen if we just gave it back? So that, the reason why the question was asked that way was because it evokes all the different scenarios that you can see that she, you know, wrote about. And in essence, we don't own the building.
That's what I see.
And we, I said in my cursory review while back that it, you know, and also to the mayor that that's what it appears is that we really don't own the building and, and the attorney rees, we don't own it.
Yeah, what's, what's confusing is, you know, it says, all right, title and interest in, and to the following described, real property.
And I think, you know, if you look at the minutes of the meeting.
Yeah, it even says on there about that, that they had got a thing about them turning over the ownership of the land and building.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, and it's basically from the minutes, it appears that the city was getting.
Building.
The building.
Building.
I mean, I don't know how.
That's exactly what that, that association told us.
Is it my understanding that the association owns the building, the S B C E?
They, they own the land and therefore they own the building. All we own is the.
Who makes up this organization?
Isn't it a guy?
Roger Irvine is.
Roger Irvine.
Irvine.
Sandy.
Helen.
Holloman.
Helen.
And Evelyn Wood. Those are all people I know anyway that are.
Yeah. Did we get those, those Benton County recordings here too?
Yes, those are the.
Yeah, those easement recording.
Yeah, that's what you're looking at there is the easement. So starting on page two of the, the quick claim deed. And that starts.
Okay, I see the number, yeah, okay.
So going off of what Counselor Williams just asked, does this mean that the S B C E is actually responsible for maintaining the building?
No.
No, okay.
They did, what they did was is they kept the property. They made an easement, okay, that says that they're, with a quitclaim deed. So what they did was they transferred the responsibility for the building to Benton County. Which then transferred that.
To Monroe.
City of Monroe. And we, under whatever guise was presented, I don't know, I wasn't there, only Counselor Myers was there.
Yeah.
Slate of hand.
Then the minutes said that we got the building and I, and to me, if I'm looking at how the paper was distributed and put in our files and all that. It, and from everything I've ever been told, it's our building.
We specifically asked them about that and they specifically said, you get the building after ten years.
And in all of our conversations with Director Chavez, it was never refuted.
Well, no, she thought we did too, but then she found this and then gave it to Steve.
Someone probably from, I'm going to guess, probably Roger, talked to.
Chavez.
Chavez.
Yeah.
Said, actually to the county, to their county attorney Vance, and said, you need to look at this. And so everyone started getting brought to speed. And then forwarded to me, which I then forwarded to the mayor. And, and so this is very recent, within the last few weeks. Yes, counselor.
So in the Monroe Library Property Use Eastman. It's between South Benton Community Enhancement, S B C, S B C E, which is the grantor. And Oregon nonprofit organization and in favor of Benton County, a political subdivision of the state of the county, right?
Well, that's, that was the original. Then Benton County had a, had the, could pass it on to someone, anyone. They passed it on to the City of Monroe, so.
In here because it says that the grantor retains all responsibility and shall bear all costs and liabilities of any kind related ownership, operation, upkeep and maintenance of the property. So this was original and then some, there's, are we missing a piece?
Then it was passed on to us.
By Benton County.
Where's that paperwork?
On this quitclaim at the top, South Benton Community Enhancement releases quitclaims to City of Monroe.
And there's provisions in the easement that allow that transfer to occur and we are obligated to assume if we accept it, we accept it, which we did.
And who accepted?
Yeah, I wonder where we accepted it.
Joseph.
Council did on July twenty-second, that's your packet as well, counselor, was the city council minutes.
Well, yeah, I see the minutes, but.
They did it on a vote.
Okay, but nothing was ever signed or anything?
They did it on a vote.
I don't know.
Oh, you said?
Oh, boy.
Yeah, under new business, transfer Monroe Community Library ownership. Roger Irvin.
Right, but it's not even, that's not even accurate, so I, how, I don't know how we find that so legally binding when none of this is so incredibly inaccurate.
What, what role the Friends of Library is going to play? And Roger said it was no option until the federal library grant was closed, which was the ten-year period that they told us.
So our, our attorney has everything. One additional piece, the original I G A. But everything you have before you victim, the attorney read and her opinion is based upon all of this.
And if you notice, my motion was to accept the building and the land. So if they didn't give us the building, my motion was moot.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Is it even legal?
Right, but wouldn't, I mean, how? I'm kind of frustrated because I'm like, I got a lot of questions and there's no attorney to answer them. But to me, this doesn't seem. I mean, I'm kind of like, it seems really loophole-y. I'm not sure how we're incredibly stuck with it.
Well. One person I talked to at work, he lives in another state, so it's no big deal. He goes, are we going to ask the Friends of Library for fourteen years of maintenance?
I asked Dan, or sorry, Mayor Sheets the same thing in a text today. So are we backdo?
Backcharging?
Yeah.
Well.
I, I don't think we want to be on like a contentious footing with them.
Well, that, that's. Again, our, our attorney feels that that's not the case, that we, we accepted it.
Yeah.
Where we, it, did, did the city send it to an attorney to be vetted?
I don't, I assumed it was.
I think I have some confusion here because the intent has been for the last, I don't know how many years, but you know, greater than ten years. That the city owned the, the building and intent has to speak for something. There has to be some weight there because both sides thought the same thing.
Yeah. The library, I thought, you know, they never said anything about the ownership that was brought up. None of them said we own it.
They thought that they had gifted a library building to the city.
Well, either that or that's what they presented.
The easement was drawn up by Roger and his crew and Benton County and the City of Corvallis.
Yeah.
So I mean, you have to draw some conclusions.
Yeah.
And the City of Monroe has abided by the terms ever since.
So we're.
And we had a five to zero acceptance of it regardless of what was not accepted.
Yeah.
Maybe we were given snake oil and that sounded kind of, I hate saying that, but it kind of sounds like it might have been.
Is there any way to get the snake oil off?
You're, read, read what your attorney says.
There used to be recordings, I don't know if they're around anymore.
I did have, I did, I don't think I had those destroyed. There might be some cassette tapes from that period of time.
It sounds like our attorney is basically saying, just keep extending until we can come up with something different.
So.
We should note that.
Counselor Winthor's here. Welcome.
So you, 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 you really.
You in the. There's an additional, yeah, there you go.
Yep, perfect.
Just so he's.
Turns out we don't.
You, you really have three choices. One, you could continue negotiating and just say, well, we're stuck with it. And try to get the best deal you can to get a cost share in place like we have been. The other would be to get the county to take the building back. Okay, and let them work with South Benton. S B C E to help them transfer. Now, if you remember, in the six options that Ashley presented, that was one of them, was that the county was willing to discuss that. And the third would be to go through, go to a judge and extinguish this. So there's a provision called extinguishment. Now, if that's the case.
That's going to be expensive. For them to.
It would, extinguishment would be the, again, the, the, the easement is very clear that it has to be a judge that does it.
Well, and, and if the county is willing to have discussions about that, I mean, the thing is, is if it, if, if this doesn't actually entitle, if the city does not own the land and the building, then it's not, there's, oh, there's a lot less worry that the city is giving up some sort of asset that they, it's actually a liability.
It is. No, counselor, you're right. It is in fact a liability, but the intent, however, of all parties is that we all want a library.
Of course.
Of course, yeah.
We never didn't.
So whether the county.
So if the county is willing to, and their, and their budget is, I mean, to them, probably the small amount, the stuff that we're you know, complaining about is probably piddly in their.
Oh, sure.
Budget size.
And, and the other part of it is, is that they already have, they can extend.
That's what I'm saying, maybe the county would be willing to absorb it. And, and also it's, I mean, that's why they collect library taxes is to provide library services to.
Yes.
Much better positioned to.
The city does not get library taxes to maintain the library.
I talked to said if we don't own, own the building in this, or they'd rather we didn't own the building and didn't pay for it extra like that. Or we, or we create the library taxing district like a fire district and we cover all the outlaying areas. And that, that would be one other option that would help us fund it, but we'd have to take that to a bond and go.
And there are, and there already is a special taxing district for the library.
Right, however, if we just let it go, somebody else does that, we don't lose the library. Somebody else does that and our tax money and all our time that we've spent doing all this kind of stuff can be better used for the things that are really going to benefit our community.
Like our bridge.
Right, or whatever else we have. This has really dominated a lot of our time and caused a lot of contention in our neighborhood and all that. And nobody, nobody wanted that from the get-go. That was never the intent of any of this.
Six months and we never really got a whole ton of.
Right, no input.
Corvallis really didn't want.
Nobody wanted to discuss it.
City manager said, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not dealing.
Yeah, and then every, every.
Impressed with that video.
And then everyone gives us a bad time, like we're putting up to the last minute. It's like, no, like.
It wasn't us.
Right.
We did the administrative steps we had to do. And then the time basically was taken up by people that didn't want to come to the table.
Or give us, string us along.
Yeah.
Which is, I think, was part of it too.
It seemed to me they just didn't want to deal with it at all.
So is there an easiest route for this? I mean, is there an easy, if we, I mean.
Well, we can't make any decisions, but we can discuss.
Yeah, like what did, you know, what does everybody?
Just, just like we did with the Paulson's, we all sat executive session, came up with what we were going to do and say. And then went back into public and said, this is what we're going to do. You could do a couple of things. One, you can say, we reviewed the attorneys and we have more questions for the attorney and that we'll have to deal with it another time. Basically, just start thinking about these options. Mayor Sheets might be able to talk with Commissioner Weiss as well and start talking about and start talking about what happens if, and perhaps the city counselor as well, Correll City Counselor that Mayor Sheese is now good friends with and he's actually a nice gentleman.
I know.
There actually are three Corvallis City Councilors that want to talk to Ashley.
I know. There actually are three Corvallis City Councillors that want to talk to Ashley Chavez. Is they have questions, especially around the money situation.
And I did send, I don't know if you saw the Corvallis City Council. I wrote Mark a nice polite, but I said, you know, there might be some confusion here. So I gave him the timeline. On the. What we did with our IGA. I also told him about, you know, I gave him the facts because he didn't appear.
To know them.
Really to know them.
Yeah.
And I wanted to make sure that before I told, I said, hey, regardless, in the end, I just want you to have good information before your councillors go to staff.
Yep.
Which they're.
We brought this up to them in December and in those meeting minutes that Gabe shared with us, he made it sound like this all just recently came up in the last month.
Right.
And it was just like.
No legal standing in this whole contract. They can't do anything.
Yeah, he wanted to brush it under the rug and Gabe kept pushing and I really appreciate that. Yeah.
So what are our options, Steve? I know you said we can just continue. I mean, we have three options, right? Continue down the path and like do a cost, shared cost savings thing. And keep the extension for the IGA. Or we is is giving up the building even an option because from what I'm reading in the memo. I'm not a hundred percent clear on whether or not it is.
So it it we could give back the easement if the county is willing to accept the responsibility back.
And it might be that.
So if we if we can go that route, then basically the county would just take over the. You know, maintenance and basically they would have the terms of this. I don't know, the terms of this easement would be on the county and they would need to. If they need to have a IGA with. Court City of Corvallis Library for specifically for that building.
And they do, and they already have their own specific IGA.
Yeah. Then then it would be for them to take care of the library. It would still maintain be maintained in the city. It just wouldn't be the city's.
My understanding is there has been some talk. Through side channels, there has been some talk of Benton County negotiating with the South Benton SBCE. To actually transfer the property back to the county and then let the county take care of it. In other words, the easement and all the provisions for keeping the library and all that would be the same. Right? Everyone wins in that respect.
But they probably want the asset in addition to the.
But they, the county wants the asset. Right. But there is some discussion, favorable discussion that that might, the county might be able to have that happen. But and rather than have this. Blow up because th- this does not look good for anybody.
Right.
Um, at the moment, and I think we have a very good argument that.
Well, it doesn't look good to take away library services from South Benton County.
Right, simply over who. This this convoluted.
Yeah.
Quick claim and easement arrangement, which was clearly designed to keep. Whatever they did as a perpetual library. I mean, they say that in perpetuity for generations and generations.
Which makes sense that they want to protect that the. Because they're not giving it to the city so that they can, we can turn it into a city hall or whatever.
The council, what the Benton County then would do, in essence, is basically get the asset.
Yeah.
And keep it as a library for generations and generations to come, and they have control of the tax. So go out and increase your tax accordingly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they'll be liable if anybody gets injured there or it's marks on the walls. It's all them.
With them for scheduling meeting rooms or any of that stuff. It'll all be, yeah.
We're out.
Yeah, we don't have to worry about. So that would be my.
A lot off our plate.
That would be my, if if just from an administration viewpoint, just from an operations viewpoint, that would take so much headaches off of Don, I. And Mark.
Oh, yeah.
And Ron. And we can focus on the other things in town with the scarce resources we have. And we still have a beautiful library that can still be the cornerstone of our of our.
Community. Would would this explain why the other two libraries that are in the peripheral part of Benton County have, for example, they're electrical covered? Or like they are also owned by the county and it's not, those are not actually like. Philomath or LC buildings?
I don't know about LC, Philomath owns this building.
Oh, they do? Okay.
And so it's a different, see.
They're all different.
I'm hearing, I'm hearing this ripple effect. We changed one IGA, we have to change the other, but my point to Mark was. We all have different IGAs and we all have different circumstances.
Right. Yeah, this quick claim doesn't have Monroe on it anywhere other than the word plot is.
So.
Yeah.
Well.
SBCE is giving, is granting.
To Benton County.
County.
Top of the, at the top of the quick claim deed.
Yeah.
South Benton Community Enhancement releases and quick claims to the City of Monroe Municipal Corporation.
They're releasing it to us.
Yeah, they released it to us. The acceptance of this quick claim is subject to provisions of the easement and the right way easement. That's the property of the, in other words.
So these are the these easements that are back here is what.
I'm just trying to read that second one. It doesn't really say about who owns the property though.
I'm sure.
The property is owned by, is owned by, if you look at the.
SBCE.
It's owned by the SBC.
And this is just a description of the right of way.
Yeah.
So you paying taxes on it?
Um, it does, they know when it's.
It's government. It's tax neutral because it's owned by.
It's like all of our property, we don't pay taxes on it either.
I mean, we're paying taxes for it.
Well, you're paying the, yes.
But there's no property tax on the land of that building.
Council.
Tax for that, on top of paying tax for it anyway.
Yeah.
Yes, that is correct. We're taking from our operational fund, from our general obligation, from our general fund. To pay for this. So the taxes that they are getting are going to pay for this, which are going. Towards supporting a larger community, which.
Right.
It is double taxation.
As much as I'd like to have some kind of control of that library, I think. To represent our constituents, at least the ones I have talked to, they'd rather we not own it.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm hearing.
And we heard testimony today that all, all of this stuff, and they said people inside of Monroe too, but. I haven't seen too many people that have actual inside city Monroe addresses here.
No, I agree with you.
Two.
I saw two.
I saw two.
Well, and if.
Two out of seven hundred and thirty-five?
I bet that entire list of people that gave me that six.
When it was packed, yeah.
Two.
And I and I made a donation to the library fund when I first moved here. I was like, I want a nice library. I live in town. Like, I I feel like I'm on their list and I I'm using a Deschutes library pen right now. I love libraries.
I did get a minor cut at the library. It was very minor, so I gave my blood to it.
Well, you know, I'll I'll be honest, the cities had to spend a lot more money than you guys think we've had because we had. An incident where. Somebody came in and I don't know if you've had experience with people that are on certain kinds of drugs, but. They lose control of certain body functions.
Oh, dear.
And we had to have a decon team come in for our bathrooms.
And I I told Ron, you won't do that again.
No.
We will call.
It costs thousands of dollars to have that done.
Yeah.
And and you know, it's it's kind of sad, but.
It is.
It's a public building. You can't lock it up.
Right.
Right.
So.
So what we need to determine then, we still have a lot of questions, but. Do we ultimately, the big, one of the big deals is our timeframe is probably coming up, right? So do we need to extend that?
I think.
So that we still have a little bit more time. To come up with it.
September thirtieth is is the end of this current extension.
Yeah, we went ninety days, right?
We went ninety days, so we don't have anything immediate in the next week or two. Counselor Williams asked what the recommendation would be to do that. I think what we're hearing is is that we start talking to the county.
Yes.
About that. Ashley Chavez will be here on the twelfth. So I told her that we would not, we would have, I told her we would have executive session here, but if nothing else was on the agenda. This evening, but we would be talking about it on the twelfth. So she will be here. And I think maybe at that point, we start the discussions of how to transfer this back.
Yeah, I think we explore that first. If the county is not amenable to it, then we move on to. You know, we basically have to fulfill the duties of this unless we want to.
Well, and I think that that's that's going to be a difficult sell now that everything's come to light. I think. That that's going to be really hard on our community to have to hear. Hear us say that we have to continue to provide something for something that isn't ours. And so it's really nice to be able to. You know, it'd be really nice to try to have that opportunity. So.
Just say, hey, you don't take it, we're not renewing the IGA.
Well, that's not, I mean.
I I know, I like the library, but.
Remember, the library IGA is for Corvallis to provide library services. What happened if the I, that's another question I asked the attorney, but I didn't have her specifically address. Was in our conversation leading up to this. I wanted her to focus on this because this really is kind of the key.
Yeah.
The linchpin of this whole thing. But I asked her, I said, well, what happens if the IGA doesn't? Says, well, you still have, you still have obligations to the building. I said, yes.
Well, could it be somebody else?
But and I said, we could have someone else provide library services. She said, yes. Okay.
I have a ton of books.
Provisions of the easement, the provisions of the easement is that it must be maintained as a library. Doesn't say how it could be done. The IGA just simply says, we're going to have Benton County do it. And Benton County as con and Benton County says, well, we're not doing it. We're contracting with Corvallis to do it. So that ends. But at that point, you have two choices. One, you can find books and put it in there and get some volunteers to do it. Or you just simply close the doors until it's the town comes to agreement that this is what it's supposed to be. That would apply a lot of pressure, but it would be a lot of pressure on you.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm not, I'm not saying that glibly or anything else. I understand.
I still like trying to make a library taxing district for the city of Monroe maintenance of it, but. I know it's kind of tough sell.
It it is tough no matter what we do. I mean, the easiest and best is to give it back to the county.
Yeah.
And let the county talk to South Benton and see if they'll just simply. Keep the same easement, just but just revert the property back to them.
And that's why I think we should explore option one first and then basically we can. Go from there, you know, basically if 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 that's fruitless, then we can. Move on to our other options and decide at that point if we want to.
Yeah.
At least that way we can tell our constituents, we're doing due diligence, we're trying.
And I was encouraged by the comments tonight, by them understanding that we have a tough situation. And that, you know, it is a money issue and them saying that they are willing to step up because that's exciting to me. We all want to work towards the same thing. It was a fight that was never a fight. It was the pot whisker, which I don't appreciate.
Yeah.
So I have a huge problem with that. However. However, I'm, you know, I'm I'm happy to look beyond that if we can come to a resolution.
Well, we can always renew the IGA at a ninety day clip instead of doing a whole ten years and stuff like that. I mean.
Right.
I I would, I would never do a ten year IGA any.
That's crazy.
Okay.
Yeah.
That is a long time.
Yeah.
Adding on to what you said, Counselor Cuthbertson, I I. Agree that some nice things were shared tonight. I don't appreciate that somebody, one of them said. Before we get our panties in a twist next time, I want to be like, you're the one twisting panties on Facebook. Like you are the reason everyone's mad at the city councils because you're posting things endlessly about.
They have meant that the opposite way too, so.
I don't think he did. I think he was.
But.
Yes, manipulation, I love it.
Yeah, but yeah.
You're nice to give him the benefit of the doubt.
Yeah, in a way, yeah, making it, make you, you know, yeah, making us look like we're the people.
Exactly, it was gaslighting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, um, you know, I don't know. I I think that. We can come to an agreement hopefully and work it out, but I do like the idea personally of just letting it go back and. Being able to wash our hands of it. I think our citizens will appreciate that.
I mean, it's as far as we know, that does not stop the library from being the library.
Yeah, it's no, it's no loss to the city if 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 Benton County takes it and continues operating it as a library.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, so.
Can we make a stipulation though that they continue to operate it as a library in the same form and function that it currently is?
Well, it hasn't.
The 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 easement that they quit claimed us, what basically has that, all those, that's basically what's making us do all this stuff too. And so if if they accept the easement back.
They have all the same conditions.
They would still have the same conditions unless they worked out with the SBC to, yeah, some other deal.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so I guess I'm going to go talk to the commissioners.
Yes, and my recommendation coming out of council, out of executive session. Would be to continue exploring the ideas that Ashley Chavez put her six points. Um, which includes giving back this to the to Benton County. Um, she's going to come on the twelfth. That would also encompass the nice comments that were made this evening. I put that in quotation marks, but nice comments. Uh, but it basically just, it's not a decision per se. It's just simply, we're going to continue down the road of working with. Corvallis and Benton County to arrive at the best solution for Monroe.
And when you say the twelfth, that's the work session?
Work session, correct, sir.
Cool.
And at this.
Just didn't know if that was a separate meeting or.
The work session.
That's the regular.
And in the, in the meantime, we can be doing back channel.
Yes.
Work.
And we'll continue.
The back channel, I think, has worked very well for us.
Yes, we actually back channeling. We have some very interesting support.
We do.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good job, Mr. Mayor. That's great.
It's nice to have friends in other places.
Yes. It's good to make alliances.
Yep, oh, absolutely. Okay, I'll wait for Counselor Linder to return before I. We close out of this unless there's anything else we want to talk about with regard to this subject.
No.
No. It's just. I know.
Mobile expendable plastic preformed home. But my staffer trying to find temporary city halls for us.
Expendable.
Yeah, it's what it says. It's a, it's a Zalindo portable prefabricated teen tiny home.
Is it recyclable too?
Might be.
There used to be a division just over in Harrisburg. It was called Mobile.
Actually, you know. I don't know if you see that or not, but that actually looks pretty good.
Can they 3D print it? I've seen those. Well, they do with concrete.
They do. Pretty cool. Okay. Yep.
Before it gets.
Gets crazy. We're getting crazy. Whoa, stop that. Okay, we're going to go ahead and come out of executive session.
Yes, I I think that just.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, all the mob, yes, go ahead.
If anybody's still out there.
Okay. There was nobody there when I got here.
I remember last time they were like banging the door down because they had to go to the bathroom or something.
Yeah.
What's taking you so long?
It was raining and they're like twenty people up or more, maybe.
They could have gone back.
Or somewhere else or.
All right. You ordered vanilla.
So we're coming out of executive, we're going to go ahead and come out of executive session. Using.
Oh, I know. Well, some people like make a bunch of extras. Go ahead.
Hey, thank you. I appreciate that. So we're coming out of executive session now. Our discussion about the library IGA. So we're going to go ahead and continue exploring our options. We're going to talk to Ashley Chavez. She'll be here on her work session on the twelfth of August. Uh, we will continue to work with Benton County and with the city of Corvallis and the library system. On those options, including the the options that Ashley has presented to us. I think there were six options altogether. So that is where we're at right now. There you go. Okay, so we're back in regular council mode. So the next item on the agenda is Resolution twenty twenty four dash twelve. This is a resolution transferring funds for beginning fund balances for the fiscal year twenty twenty four to twenty twenty six. Budget.
Very straightforward. We're basically, we had streets and storm water and public works. We cannot do that. So this year we separated them and this is basically just taking the beginning of fund balances, just moving them so to the new funds.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept Resolution number twenty four, twenty twenty four dash twelve. Resolution transferring funds within the Public Works Fund to both street and storm.
Alright.
We'll all jump at the same time. Okay, any other comments, questions regarding this resolution before we vote?
How were the amounts determined? Did we just have a line item that was? How were the amounts determined? Did we just have a line item that was for those or, or?
Well, technically, yeah, technically you're supposed to carry all this forward and do that, but we did was I carried it forward and then rounded it up.
Okay.
And, uh, ma- basically made our fund balances the same. So. Our beginning fund balances really didn't change from last year to this year. It's just that we kinda squeezed a tube of toothpaste to make it work.
Okay.
We did transfer funds. I mean, I mean, we did look at it, said this is how much we spent. And this is how much we had additional, and that went into it. That way we can make sure all the other fund balances were accurate.
Okay, I just didn't know how that was determined.
Any other questions? Okay, we shall vote then. Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Myers.
Yes.
Counselor Rich.
Yes.
Counselor Cuthbertson. Counselor Linder.
Yes.
And Counselor Winter.
Yes.
All right, excellent. Thank you. Next is old business, speed limit signage update.
Um, it's with, um, Benton County being made up now.
This actually was something that came up during the law enforcement.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so they're being, uh, made up. We have the, the twenty mile an hour signs, the, uh, the will be. Mark and I were meeting to put the location in. We can start putting the bases in place. These are. Called breakable signs. So you have a base that goes in and the signpost actually with those whole things kinda slip inside of it and bolted in place. We'll start getting those positioned.
This way, once someone runs it over, you can easily.
Easily replace it.
Keeps the basin in.
Yeah, correct. So we'll be, but that's, uh, being made by Benton County.
I think the theory is also to limit damage to whoever runs into it.
Exactly. Also, they, they get a bumper repair, but not a full front end.
Do we have a timeframe when you think they might be done with them?
It typically takes, uh, Chris up there, uh, at Benton County about three weeks, depending on his workload.
Okay.
So, um, I would expect to have it in place by the first of August.
Okay.
Awesome timeframe.
Can we charge people if, uh, if it's known who runs into them?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah, their insurance company will cover it.
Okay, excellent.
Similar to when they, uh.
Welcome sign, yes.
Or flew into it. I don't know.
It's kind of a flying car thing, but yeah.
It's electric?
Well, I think when the redesign of the welcome sign, when they repaired it, it.
Breaks away easier.
It's a little easier now, so.
Okay.
We're lucky we didn't have a.
Holders in front of it, not so much.
We shall, hopefully we'll never see again. Okay, so I'm gonna move on to the city events calendar and upcoming city events that I'm aware of at this point in time. Uh, we still have every Thursday from now until October third. Correct me if I've got the date wrong. Farmer's Market, which is behind Silo's Coffee, Thursday.
Four to seven. There's only a few vendors. It's really hard. Nobody really comes out. And so it could be, end up being the demise. We gotta have people come down and support it or. My vendors keep leaving.
I bought pickled things two weeks ago.
That's awesome. And I think we're gonna have a new pop-up present. We also have the opportunity to do pop-ups. So if somebody just wants to come down for one week, and you can be a maker, you don't have to grow it. You can be a maker, you can be a whatever. Um, and you can come down and try it out for a week for ten bucks if you wanna vend or whatever. We also have a co-op booth, and I think you can try it up to three times before you have to pay. And I think it's, I can't remember, it's a lesser amount for the year. And, but if you just want a booth for the rest of the time, it's seventy-five dollars for a space for every week. But anyway, we're trying, we're trying to do it, but you have to have community support too, or the vendors go away, so.
Does that seventy-five dollar amount get prorated for people who join midsummer? Um, like I, if I think of somebody who's like, oh, I grow strawberries or, you know, I bake croissants or something and they're.
Yeah, there's a whole, like, two of us who have been at it, and then the third person who's hosting it. And I'm pretty sure we'd all be really flexible just to be able to have it go and have people there.
Cool.
So.
Very good. Uh, the next event that we have is on September, September fourteenth. That's the Fourth Annual First Responders Appreciation Event. Will be at the City Park again. Senator Dick Anderson will be there. Um, I'm also arranging for music. We've got one food truck so far. This is ice cream. The kids are gonna love that part.
Oh, my gosh.
I'm working on music right now. I like to actually get a non-ice cream truck. Something, you know, you can have a meal, lunch or something, so I'm working on that too.
Another event when I'm already scheduled.
How convenient.
It's not convenient. I already spent my money back in January for it.
Same.
So we got the Halloween Spectacular. That's of course on Halloween. We'll have that at City Hall. Uh, we've got the Monroe Community Food Drive, November and December. The Alpine Holiday Festival, which is at the grade school. I have November ninth. That's a tentative date. That's typically, it's like the second Saturday, I think, of the month that they, of November that they do it. Um, and then the month of December, we've got the community toy drive. It was very successful last year. Open to do that again. And then I've got a tentative date for holiday happenings in the Monroe Light Parade. We've got that down for December fourteenth. I'll change it if I have it wrong. Beyond that, down to other business, we've got the community, the committee reports, excuse me. Uh, budget, I think we're pretty much, we're done for the moment unless, you know, we come around to the year mark and we need to. Do some other things with budget. Uh, economic development, our next meeting is Au- August fifteenth. Uh, finance and personnel. I know we, we need to get something scheduled there, I think, for the, the employee handbook. Steve, you already talked about hiring for the utility worker one and the apprenticeship.
Right.
And then the facilities and grounds worker one.
Hold on that just for a little, I'm, Ron's fine, what he's doing.
Okay.
But let's see what happens with the library.
Okay, that's.
Yeah.
That's a good point. Ordinance, I mean, we've covered, we've, well, we've got short-term rentals covered now. Um, but I'm sure we can come up with some other fun things with ordinance, because our ordinances are regularly out of date, I'm afraid.
There's always work to be done.
There's always, yeah, I know. Parks, I have the next meeting down is August seventh.
Yep.
And then public works. I just put down a timeframe. I wasn't sure when you wanted to do that.
I'd like sooner rather than later, but we also are gonna be working on, um, categorizing our roads. That we're gonna be working on and whatnot, and that takes, um. Unfortunately, quite a bit of Steve, and I didn't wanna bother him during budget. Had enough on his. We've had a few things on our plate, so that got pushed a little bit whenever.
Yep.
Whenever he feels ready to.
And the city parking field trip is just gonna be walking around, checking out spaces.
Or we were gonna go over and.
The city parking one, um, it mo- that was mostly for the Dragon Drive parallel parking.
In the grade school.
Which, which I think we got taken care of. I'm just not sure that the.
Well, I was just wondering if you're gonna do another field trip since we've been talking about parking.
Well, we actually.
Checking all the different spots.
Yeah, we haven't got, we, we weren't doing that yet. We just, the reason that the, um, Dragon Drive came up is because of the new sidewalk and whatnot. So it was. Yeah, it, it was kinda hot on fire, so we did that one first.
Okay.
Um, and I believe the school was, we just wanted to try to hurry and get that done before school was out so that they could notify people. So when they came back in the fall, everybody wasn't shocked that they had to parallel park and.
Which they will be, but.
They still will be, but.
Yeah, uh, they will be, but we were trying to give them every opportunity, yeah. To kind of, um, understand that that was gonna change. That's gonna be a hard habit to break, I think.
All the work sessions, August twelfth. Yep, yep. And the work session, yep, as we've previously mentioned, August twelfth.
August twelfth.
Six P M. Right here. Um, any counselor comments?
It's been fun. Glad we're making progress on the short-term rental deal.
Mm-hmm, that's great.
Hi, I'm curious, who is planning to rerun in November?
Oh, that was gonna be a separate conversation. Each of you individually.
This year, um, Counselor Winter, Counselor Linder, and the mayor, and Counselor Rich.
All I know is I've. Have you gotten any? What is it, a Form one or whatever?
Yeah, S, S E L one oh one.
Okay, there you go.
The website is also in City Hall.
But you haven't gotten any other ones other than mayor?
If I, I have a one, I have one folder that says elections and I have one application in it.
Okay.
Oh, so I have my application completed and saved on my computer. Um, I don't have a printer.
Would you like to send it to me and I can print it out and then you may come by and sign it?
I would love that, and I'll pay the city that whatever the printing charges. No, no, I would, I don't want.
We don't charge anything, so that's, that's, that's great.
I can print it for you too. I mean, it's just black and white, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I, I only have a black and white printer, that's why.
And thank you, Counselor Rich and neighbor.
Now, now, Mayor, we'll have company.
Fred in the folder now.
No, I, early on, I had one person from Red Hills all excited that they were going to, they had a candidate.
Oh.
Haven't seen anyone.
We still have some time.
Time. I, and typically you will see people come in at the last moment, uh, Frank there came in. He always comes in every year and says, I'll do it, but I don't know what his. I, I don't know. He always comes at the last second if he does it, so.
He did last time, or at least he and I were.
I, I very last second. He came in the day of, uh, that we. Whatever the last day in August was, I think it was the twenty fifth or something.
Well, some of you are four years, some of us are two years.
Yeah.
Well, with all the, the tracking on social media for the Monroe sites, you sure would think you'd have a lot of applicants.
Right, yeah.
Of all the people that wanna make changes.
Well, a lot of.
Live in town though either.
Yeah, as I say, a lot of the people that.
And they're also busy. They're all working sixteen to eighteen hours a day. They can't. Obligation, but they can be on Facebook.
Yeah.
I have no idea who you're talking about.
Yeah.
All right, all right. I don't have any comments. I'm, I'm happy with, uh, getting our short-term rental situation squared away. That's exciting.
I was here with you, cuz it's, uh. The confidential packet.
Confidential.
I was just gonna shred it, but you're gonna do it.
Yeah, we'll shred it.
Yet, but okay, it's very exciting.
Well, no, I was just making sure everyone knew that they don't.
Oh, I understand that.
Quick claim deed and the easement, yes.
I will keep you guys informed of the situation with the commissioners and the library.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And you know what? If you need help with anything, please let, let, I mean, let us know. I'm sure, I know I would be willing to assist if needed.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I still need to go through my. All right, I'm gonna adjourn us. Everybody have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.